On item two, I think this is every parent's worst nightmare where a young teenager who had just graduated high school was drowned offshore of Mission Beach. And so I hope that, I'm sure that there have already been investigations done as with any tragedy involving our emergency responders and public safety. But I do just want to say that, I'm sorry I speak for many, that our condolences to this family that lost their son, 19-year-old, would lay in St. Bell and Mission Beach. And I hope that the city reaches a fair conclusion and reviews its procedures to avoid this situation going in the future. Riptides are getting stronger, just as waves are getting stronger and more powerful. So I hope we can make adjustments to that. Regarding the Housing Authority complaint, we are seeing more density in certain neighborhoods. We're seeing that as a result not only of actions of the Housing Authority, your actions working with the Housing Commission, but we are seeing more people in the same areas because of ADUs, because of other density measures. And I encourage you to consider how that impacts traffic in communities. A person died a few blocks from my house here in Clermont, actually about two weeks ago, was hit-and-run accident. And it's a busy street, there's more traffic. And I encourage you, along with adding density to neighborhoods, to please consider the traffic surveys and look and see if people are now at greater risk because more people are having to park on the streets, the visibility is impaired, and there's more traffic raising the risk of deaths such as this. On SCS four, this is a very interesting case. I encourage San Diegans to pay close attention to it because it really deals with a case where a person was issued a citation and had no right to legal counsel for what turned out to be unconstitutional infringement on his First Amendment rights. And he had to pay all of the court costs, he had to find an attorney. And I encourage the counsel to change this ordinance as this plaintiff is asking, but also to consider that these types of infractions deny people legal representation. And when you're dealing with First Amendment issues, that's a very serious situation to be in when someone is denied access to an attorney to represent them. So I'm running out of time, so I'll just say, welcome back to the counsel. And again, to the clerk, thank you for including the legal links on the agenda page.
So on number five, on the trip in fall, I just wanted, this is another one, and I keep speaking on them because we've just got to stay, you know, involved as we are, but try to do more and more work. Because I walked, I'm in Hillcrest right now, and I walked all the way up from the convention trolley stop to Hillcrest. And while I was walking, I was watching the sidewalks, as I always do, but I was sort of counting them. And I think I lost track when I got to 100 of the spots on the sidewalks that were dangerous. So I'm speaking to the public now, public, you must have self-advocacy on your walking. It's the way to take control of this. And things, accidents will happen, but I want to send my love out to you, public, and tell you when you're walking, you can do more, stay in control of your own life. It really helps and it's wonderful. So that's it, thank you, looking forward to the day, and love to all.
Good morning, City Council, everybody looks nice today. Good morning again. First of all, I'd like to say some prayers for LA real quick and let them know that we got open arms to them. We are here to be a city of open arms, to let them know that we're here to assist them in any kind of way that we can possible. Good morning, San Diego. I want to comment on this situation that they're doing with the housing authorities. They're putting people with disabilities into areas that are known to be hazardous areas, and these disabled people aren't knowing about it. As in the place that I live in, it has a warning sign there as if there's been hazard material or something's been in the ground. The pipes are made out of asbestos pipes and stuff, and this is the area that I live in, okay? It's off of Federal Boulevard in Euclid. I rarely ever see anybody cleaning up the trash over there. I want to establish something here. Real quick, this is a document of establishment of important rights and principles of the environmental protection I'm entering with. I'm a charter of liberty, and I need to be able to station a place where I can continue to do this work for the city. I will be trying to figure out how I'm supposed to proceed with the paperwork to try to do this, but basically I want to be a trustee of the city, and basically with the city. I got the ability to do anything I need to do, since it's the city. But anyways, like I said, back to the housing situation, and when you've got people with disabilities, they're not comprehending what's going on, and you place them in these areas, and they don't have no clue what they're being exposed to, I have a little bit of problem with that. Because these people are disabled and they're supposed to be taken care of properly, they're supposed to be, I'm talking about, thought about all the way down to the P's and Q's, okay, all the way down to the A through Z.
Thank you for that concluding comment.
One last thing. I was in a situation with the MTS, and I was forced to get off the trolley and walk after I had bought the ticket.
That is your concluding time, thank you. Next is Laurie, we're going to those participating remotely.
Just a side note, those of us who are at home watching remotely, I see council member Hila Rivera and Moreno not paying attention to our comments and chatting with one another, and it's just a little inappropriate, I think, to not give the public some basic courtesy when we're commenting and taking time out of our lives to be part of this meeting. The recommendation of the Housing Commission, I hope you will accept this, I think we have a new executive director and chief executive officer who has been working under extraordinarily difficult situations. And related to that, we see with these fires up in Los Angeles, the air quality impacts that disproportionately affect people who are forced to be outside even when the air quality is hazardous. As the previous speaker noticed, many people who have lost their housing are dealing with disabilities, they're older adults who have health challenges, and that may have contributed to their lack of housing. And so I hope that as we look at these fires, that when I was in office in 2007 for the wildfires, having indoor spaces for people to shelter during those fires was a challenge. We took up a lot of places for temporary housing, and I hope that the Housing Commission and you as the Housing Authority will take that into account very seriously when looking at the action plans dealing with any disaster. How do we get people off the streets and into safety? It's going to be an extraordinary challenge in Los Angeles, but I think it will be a very important challenge for San Diego to begin planning for as well. So I wish this executive officer and the president and executive officer success going forward, and please take into account the most vulnerable when dealing with disasters like these wildfires.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just want to take a moment to send our love and our thoughts for our friends in LA who are currently still experiencing some of the worst wildfires in California history, and thousands of people have been displaced. Some of our firefighters are there fighting the fire, we sent one strike team, our fire chief decided to hold our second strike team back here in San Diego, just in case we had fires, our Santa Ana wins. But we're stand ready and available to help. I have heard that there's been so much help offered that they've asked people to not come to LA and bring more help, but this is going to be a long-term recovery, and so we here in San Diego, stay with our brothers and sisters up there. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Von Wilpert. I always appreciate when you highlight those important moments.
My words are guided as a comment on item 200 by the heroic stepping down of Madam Nora Vargas. The same intense yes for this item, because we need a purification system to accept the volunteerism effort of these candidates, nominees, to occupy that important position of safety. I have heard, I have seen the body language of Madam Wilpert, yes, at the Safety Committee chairmanship. She was achy by the pain of the suffering of her friend from the hands of criminals. Thank you for that testament, ma'am. I have been a consistent attendee of your committee meeting. And thank you, Sir Sean L. Rivera, the Board of Trustee member of that school we call Mesa College, where the guy that is spewing toxicity in our neighborhood is in plaque, Board of Trustees. And we learn from the professors there that ceramics is indeed hazard activity. And the legislators and the implementers, executive branch of this great city failed.
Thank you, your time has concluded.
To step down.
Your time has concluded. We will now start the five-minute timer and go to those participating remotely.
Cesar Javier, toast to the patriotic leadership of Madam Nora Vargas. The same spirit that I will be commenting on this item. The presenter mentioned about the city.
Sir, this is going to be your first warning. Let the public speaker have his moment. Thank you.
Can I have that credit lost time, sir? The presenter has honestly declared that the city has the robust investment on city development projects, if I got it right. It's false. I'll give you an example. An economic driver must be invested in infrastructure. We did, but what is going on on pure water? I know it. I have been a consistent student here, University of Life. What is that now correlated with what you are saying, sir? If you are the accountable public servant, I suggest heroically, respectfully, step down. Mr. Mayor, this is a solution in your Sona, state of the nation-like city address. Be brave. Let the next leadership come in. Now step down because you are failing. This is all contra to what you are trying to campaign. I'm sorry, but that's my reading as a substitute teacher and an attendee of this great University Life as a student. You are our teachers, you were, like Mr. Foster telling me, connecting the dots, like Mr. Whitburn telling me the consensus or approval by statistics, the great and human.
Thank you, your time has concluded.
Good afternoon, Council President Lacava, and council members. My name is Peter Kaminsky from the Balboa Park Cultural District. I'm extremely excited to be here today to discuss the Creative City presentation, the culmination of a detailed, considered, and engaged cultural planning process. Our community, as you know, is calling out for increased programs, increased activities, further development of cultural districts, and better integration of arts and culture experiences both within the whole community and also a driver for our tourism economy. There is much to be done. I was lucky enough to travel over this holiday period, and there is one thing I did that for, the cultural experiences. That's it. The whole reason I went anywhere was for the cultural experiences, and I guarantee the majority of people traveling at the same time as me did exactly the same thing. How we as a community best identify, develop, and support our many artists and the important and burgeoning needs of our cultural districts will position San Diego extremely well now and into the future. Examples and opportunities abound and should be identified throughout our city, every council district. Our diverse city celebrates districts both already in place and in development, throughout examples including the Black Arts and Culture District, Liberty Station, Barrio Logan, Convoy, La Jolla, and Balboa Park. In addition, the representation of the culture of the Kumeya Nation is strong and must become stronger throughout the region.
Thank you for that concluding comment. Becky?
Great, thank you. It's so nice to see you all. I wrote down my remarks today, so that should tell you something right off the bat. Thank you, council members. Council President Lacava, congratulations on your recent appointment as council president. We appreciate your leadership as well as all of the members of the city council. My name is Becky Philpott. I am a lifelong resident of the city of San Diego and a longtime resident of Council District Five, where I'm represented by my friend and our amazing council member, Marnie Von Wilpert. And I just wanted to throw in a personal note that I've lived in Scripps Ranch for almost 25 years, and I was there in 2003 when we experienced the Cedar Fire, the most frightening experience in my life. And I have an adult son and his partner who live in Los Angeles, so it has been a stressful week for all of us, as many of us. I stand before you today representing the City of San Diego Arts and Culture Commission, to which I have been appointed by councilmember Von Wilpert, along with my wonderful colleagues, your appointees and appointees of the mayor. Creative City is San Diego's first-ever cultural plan. As you heard the presentation, it's been developed over the last two years involving residents from every corner of our council and our city, families, seniors, individuals, artists. We know that the city and state right now are under enormous financial pressure. The need for our city to address health and safety is a number-one priority. While you, the council, and we as residents will buckle down to mitigate and provide cultural services.
Concluding comment, please.
Yes, we must not lose sight of the programs and features of our cities. This plan is a way forward, and we must keep that vision.
Thank you for that concluding comment, sorry. I must be fair.
Delug.
Hi, my name is Delug Smith. I'm resident of District Nine, and Council President Lacava, thank you, all of council members, appreciate your time today. I'm here in support of the adoption of the Creative City Cultural Plan. I am the person that actually initiated the meeting with Mayor Gloria in 2021, organized a small group of advocates to come in, introduced the idea of a cultural plan to him, and requested he initiate it. I want to say publicly, thank you again to Mayor Gloria for taking that meeting and taking our recommendation and moving forward. Here we are three and a half years later, and we have been able to go through what I would describe as a community dreaming experience, which comes together as a cultural plan. And I also encourage you, assuming you adopt it today, that as you continue to hear the updates on this plan, please think of it like Imperial for Art Making. It's full of many different kinds of activities, many different roles, just like a palette requires multiple colors of paint, scenery requires different kinds of construction, music requires of many kinds of instruments. This is a plan that brings together the talents of our city in so many different ways, finds the assets that every community has to offer, and the aspirations that our communities have for ourselves as creative individuals, and makes them central to the way the city evolves and grows in the coming years. So thank you again for your attention over these years to give this cultural plan an opportunity to grow, and hopefully you will adopt it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, my name is Christine Martinez. I'm here with Arts and Culture San Diego. We're a group of 160-plus arts and culture organizations, large and small, from all of your districts, who are impacted by this planning. And we're here in support, we have a small group, and some of them we'll hear from today, who just want to congratulate your Cultural Affairs Department for all the hard work and thought. You went into the communities, you found out what was important. We are an economic engine, we create jobs, we create identity, we create a sense of space and self for lots of our organizations. I've heard from so many of you, district, your council members, that in your district sometimes that's the only way they can get arts and culture is through our programs, and that's very important. So I'm proud to be a part of a city who is putting this much work and effort into a cultural plan. I think Creative Cities is wonderful, and we're here to support it, and I'm excited to see what's next. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And then?
This has been many years in the making. This plan is more than just a roadmap. It's a testament to how arts drive our economic growth in San Diego, and the data shows that the number of jobs in the arts has grown a lot over the last 10 years, that nearly 4% of the jobs in our region, in our city, and then another 4% they're from are impacted by the creative economy, and that's a major component that can't be ignored. If it is ignored, there will be significant economic pain, and so we need to have a plan in place on how to bolster that type of economy. The outdated view of the arts as a secondary priority no longer serves San Diego, because this sector generates billions of dollars and supports hundreds of thousands of jobs and makes it a cornerstone for our city's economic vitality. And our artists and the creatives are not just cultural contributors, they're revenue generators. They provide jobs and benefits and retirements, help people afford their daily life, and that is why we need to support them. In particular, what stands out is how this plan highlights and addresses broader challenges that face our city. Space affordability, the struggles of small businesses and nonprofits, the need for quality job opportunities, and city resources, in particular our spaces, are how the city can step forward and be very helpful. The issue of funding is, of course, where the rubber meets the road, and the funding recommendations that rely on our city's general fund will be difficult to meet. There's no one who can say otherwise. But that doesn't mean that elected officials can't work to get philanthropy through the door. This creative plan sets us up for that. We can work across agencies and with the business community to build up cultural experience that attract more investment and more tourism, and that increases revenue to the city. This creative plan sets us up for that. I would encourage anybody, everybody, to go look at pages 55 through 57, and look at the individual planks of goal number three, creative entrepreneurship. That section alone shows what we can do without hardly spending a dollar, and yet creating a lot of money in our community for families and for people to be able to live here. And so we have to create more good jobs, plain and simple, and the creative plan sets us up to do that. Not every part of the plan can be implemented at once, but every part of the plan is designed to improve our economy. I want to point this out, and my colleagues on EDNR who heard me say this, I apologize for repeating myself, but the word "business" shows up 55 times in this plan. The word "workforce" shows up 19 times. The word "work" is there 31 times, "job" 13 times, "affordable" 23 times, "economy" 73, and "economic" 43. Fun and games is not in this plan. Of course, it can lead to a lot of fun and interesting things, but this is really about creating good livelihoods in the city of San Diego. And this highlights the deep interconnection between arts and the broader economic and social fabric of our city. So thank you again, Jonathan and David and Christine, for all your good work, and the arts and culture entrepreneurs who do the hard work out in the city. And I look forward to working with you as we bring this plan to life over the short term, and of course, over the long term. And our revenues will decide how we get that done, but in the end, over the course of several decades, this plan will set us up for success and lead to many prosperous lives as a result. So thank you for that. With that, I will move approval of staff's recommendation on item S202.
All right, with Councilmember Campio's motion, we have a recommendation to move the staff request, and we'll go now to Councilmember Whitburn.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Gloss, and thank you, Ms. Jones, Mr. Plonner Saunders, for the presentation, for all your work on this plan. Thank you to everybody who spoke on this issue. Your efforts to support our arts and culture community are impactful and appreciated. I appreciate that this includes expanding or implementing the Balboa Park Visitor Experience Plan. Balboa Park and its artistic and cultural institutions attract visitors from around the city and around the nation, and supporting not only those institutions but also the visitor experience will benefit the city greatly. I am also pleased to see support for the Downtown Arts District in this plan, and I would note that there is tremendous potential to expand the cultural connection between Balboa Park and downtown, which would inure to the benefit of both. So I am pleased to second the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. With that, we have a motion by Councilmember Campio to move the recommendation, and a second by Councilmember Whitburn. We'll go next to Councilmember Foster.
Yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Jonathan, again, to you and your team for all the work here. I think I said quite a bit at the Economic Development Committee meeting, so I'll try to keep my comments short. I actually appreciate the chair's comments. I think every time this comes up, he tries to match just how many times you have economic development and business referenced in your report in his comments, which I think is a great thing, and I think it's a much-needed thing. And I think as we are in a very difficult time, challenging time with the budget, I think it's important that we understand the economic potential and what this does for communities, and specifically communities such as District Four, where we have the Black Arts and Culture District. And I just personally, again, want to thank you, because I just don't think of a time where we've had a commitment from a director that would come in and provide the resources and the time of your team and your staff, in which you have done, as we have made that a priority in the District Four office. So I just want to thank you both for all of your time and effort. With that, I just want to say one thing. You know, the city is very good at doing reports, not only for something such as a cultural report, but of this magnitude, but no different than what we do with our community plans. And the one thing that we need to make sure, and that I ask my colleagues, is that we don't shelve this, as we have these difficult times, that we really look at the creativity throughout the report, understand its importance, and continue to invest in our arts and cultures opportunities in districts. So I'm looking forward to what the future brings. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with your office, as this will be a very important priority for the Black Arts and Culture District. Because as I said, where we established the district, it was drawn out of the promised zone, it was drawn out of the opportunity zone, and this was an innovative and creative way to bring economic development to the district. And so I'm looking forward to what the potential is, and again, thank you for your commitment and really focusing in on the San Diego Black Arts and Culture District. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you so much for the work on this and the presentation. I know you've been working very hard on this for a few years, and Jonathan, thank you for your leadership as well in this regard. You took over right during the middle of COVID, I think, around 2021, and it's been a hard time for everybody, so I appreciate everyone sticking through it. Thank you to our commissioners as well for your volunteerism, including Ms. Philpott, who is one of my personal favorite commissioners, and she's from District Five. I also am really excited to see the plan. It's also beautifully laid out. I love all of the artistic work you've done within the plan, and considering our binational region, considering equity considerations, so I think it was very well done, so thank you for the work. I am supportive of our plan, and I also really want to thank you for mentioning that we're not going to be able to implement it all at once, and the city is facing a significant budget crisis. So first year not having a general fund impact is fantastic. There are some requests for additional staffing and general fund in here, so that probably won't be able to happen this year. But I do support having this plan in place so that we can draw down the philanthropic community. I think it's a really great idea to have an arts and culture foundation. I mean, we've seen the library foundations and the Friends of the Library really thrive, and their equity implementation has been incredible. They are spreading philanthropic dollars to all libraries in our city, no matter where the donations come from, because all children need to be able to learn. So I think this is a great idea for a foundation, and now we have a plan, they'll know that to give somewhere to give it. We also want to make a plug for our Civic Center Theater, which, right now, we are pausing, looking at how we're going to redevelop downtown, but everything that Councilmember Moreno mentioned, I love as well, including the opera, including all the Broadway shows, and we couldn't have those if we don't have our Civic Center Theater. So I really appreciate this, and I will be supportive of the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for the work on this. Appreciate my colleagues' comments. Just a couple of things that I wanted to shout out. You made reference to the work with the Kumeya community to ensure that there's real intent in connecting with and drawing upon the long history of arts and culture in our region. I think that's super important, and it's good to see that implemented or included in the document here. I did have a question around the fees, the admission fees that are referenced here. I'm intrigued, can you talk to us a little bit more about what you all are envisioning there?
Sure. Admission fees are actually a really common tool in a lot of other US cities. 50 cents, a dollar, maybe $2. They usually tends to be for large venues, so not necessarily nonprofit art spaces, but more like sporting facilities. That has been the primary tool to support arts funding in Seattle for probably 25 years, and it's proven to be steady. and it's proven to be steadier than some of the other efforts like tobacco taxes in other cities that obviously are declining.
So in terms of how that would work with, is that city-funded events, city-hosted events, is it events that are going on in the community and our plan would encourage more people to charge admission fee? How does that work as part of, you know, from a budgetary perspective?
It would be very standard fee placed on a ticket purchase in a large venue. So if you're paying $57, you'd pay $58, that that funding goes directly to a fund that would be used to support the arts in some form or fashion. And all that could be kind of pre-prescribed, whether it's a funding program or its implementation of the cultural plan in a different way.
Got it. Well, I definitely appreciate the creativity and looking for new ways to provide funding, especially ongoing funding, that's super important. We need to do, we need to do a much better job of that throughout the city. And I was glad to see that in here. The content is so good that the reason I'm focusing here is because I want to see this actually happen.
Oh, thank you.
And it will require dollars in order to do that. Our structural budget deficit is not going anywhere this year or next year. So, and beyond that, the more internal sustainability that can be developed within the arts and culture community, the healthier the community will be over the long run. I would say that I think that it's important, whenever we are considering potential revenue opportunities, to see in which ways we can ensure that we are looking for revenue first from those who are coming to San Diego and try to make, maintain affordability for San Diegans. I think there's a lot of folks, and I'll talk much more about this tomorrow, but folks from across the state, the country, and the world enjoy San Diego and everything that San Diego has to offer. And meanwhile, it's a very expensive place to live, and we're talking about, you know, making some very difficult decisions when it comes to what is funded here in this city. And so the extent to which we can ask those who are coming here to enjoy the weather, the facilities, the arts and culture that San Diego has to provide, to chip in and pay their fair share, I think that that's really important and would hope that we could consider that when we're looking to admission fees or other sorts of fees in order to support the arts and culture. Again, I love the content. I want to see this come to life, and dollars are part of it will make it come to life. So in addition to the foundation, in addition to the city, you know, living up to the commitments that it's made in the past, exploring new revenue opportunities, I think is a really smart and important idea, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all do that and will be very supportive of making sure that this is not just a document that we talk about today and say that it's great, but that it's something that actually is a roadmap that is implemented over time. Thank you.
Again, we have a motion by Councilmember Campio to move the staff recommendation, a second by Councilmember Whitburn. Just offer a couple of closing statements of my own. Again, thank you, Jonathan, for your leadership and to everyone who worked on bringing this initiative forward. Three and a half years feels like a long time. It's kind of lightning speed here in the city, so. But the way that you did that makes it so easy to understand that this really is a very thoughtful and complete plan, and certainly appreciate it. And certainly thank you to everyone that spoke up today, your persistence. Some might even call it relentlessness, is exactly what is needed to drive this conversation forward. I want to repeat one of the bullet points you had in there. San Diego is among the greatest number of city-owned cultural facilities in the country. I think you said over 60. It's rather extraordinary for what folks might think of our city. And that provides a great base for us, this conversation, in addition to the more traditional venues that we often think about, and provides an important way for the city to contribute to these efforts going forward. It is important that we, as a city, as residents and businesses, invest in arts and culture and ensure program is accessible to all San Diegans. Arts and culture allow for cross-cultural collaboration and building relationships between different people and communities. And as was mentioned, we opened the Holocaust exhibit yesterday at the La Jolla-Ryford Library. Councilmember Campio was there, the mayor was there, an extraordinary exhibit, the great example of bringing it actually into the neighborhoods. As some of my colleagues said, want to be realistic and note the city is going into a difficult financial year. The goal will always find the balance between funding our city's core services and city investment in arts and culture initiatives. And I appreciate that you mentioned there's a lot of work that can be started with the adoption today that do not yet require funding, do not yet require funding. But the idea of the foundation, I think, is rather extraordinary. I know folks were a little surprised when the Parks Foundation was created, and how can a city of our size not yet have a Parks Foundation? But we have extraordinary businesses who contribute serious dollars. We have philanthropists that are very generous with their dollars, and I think the foundation really provides that larger perspective, that citywide perspective, that will really help implement many of the key elements of the plan going forward. So thank you all for your very, very good work. So again, with that, again, we had a motion by Councilmember Campio, a second by Councilmember Whitburn to move the staff recommendation. Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, the voting system, please cast your vote. That does pass unanimously, nine to zero.
All right.
S 400, as mentioned, is a request to extend the term of the legal services agreement with Hugo Parker. We are not seeking to add any additional funds to the contract. The reason for this request is because Hugo Parker is representing the city in the alleged asbestos exposure cases related to 101 ASH. There are five cases, 57 plaintiffs involved. These cases are still ongoing. The agreement was originally entered into in January 2020. This amendment seeks to extend the term through December 2026, by which time we hope and believe that those cases will be resolved. S 401 through S 404 all relate to legal service agreements primarily necessary for the defense of the numerous inverse condemnation lawsuits related to the January 2024 flooding. The January 2024 flooding cases have grown since the staff reports were prepared, which is the staff reports that you have before you. At this time, there are over 35 cases, which include over 1,500 plaintiffs, and cases are still being filed and served to this day. S 401 seeks to amend and increase the Dean Gazzo Panel Contract by an additional $1 million, which would bring the total not-to-exceed amount up to $1.5 million. The firm is handling or has handled additional cases, however, in the increases needed for the flooding litigation. They are currently well below the present not-to-exceed limit. S 404 skipping is similarly, similarly seeks to amend and increase the Schwartz-Sumergen Panel Contract, also by an additional $1 million, which would bring that total not-to-exceed amount to $1.5. The firm has been handling additional cases besides the flood litigation. It's currently also handling the 101 ASH negligent construction litigation. The increase is necessarily necessary for a Schwartz-Sumergen firm to continue to represent the city on these matters. S 403, excuse me, is seeking to approve a legal services agreement with the McDougal-Beamer Firm and is for not-to-exceed amount of $500,000. The McDougal Firm is well-versed in large-scale class-action cases, municipal law, and particularly in inverse condemnation. Bringing McDougal onboard is necessary due to the massive scope and scale of these flood cases. As I mentioned, there are presently over 35 cases, 1,500 plaintiffs, and those cases have been filed by over 26 law firms. The city attorney's office simply lacks the capacity and resources to deal with this litigation of this scale in-house, in addition to the regular caseload that the city attorney is dealing with. They are requesting these cases over a quarter of a billion dollars in damages as well. And finally, S 404 seeks an amendment to the legal services agreement with the Buckhalter Law Firm. The amendment requests to increase the not-to-exceed limit by an additional $600,000. As many of you familiar with Buckhalter and C.C. Miller, who does a lot of our insurance litigation, she is working on the DeAnza litigation, 101 ASH, and flood cases. DeAnza litigation seeks to recover insurance proceeds. 101 ASH insurance is a large component of the subcon, or the lawsuits against the contractors and subcontractors, and flooding to ensure, the flooding cases to ensure that we have appropriate insurance as well. And with that, I will do my very best to answer any questions you may have.
I long to hear the court's verbal game, illegal verbal games. Whoever presents lies after lies, in my observation, wins a case. Having a council before a council looks like questionable to me. The city has city mayor's office. Is that office not capable to sit like Madame Jean Jordan? I expect the new elected attorney lady, beautiful lady, and who's intelligent, who responded to our issue. Sir, your presentation gives me spirit, more resolve, and I'm confident that our issue will be resolved through this learning of item 400. I thought that we are working on priority issues. I thought that our efforts and time are focused on the homelessness and not this, this one, or the preceding items, like the cultural, looks like part now of your priority. I'm sorry. I am just like a parrot. Good morning, good morning. It's done, you cannot do anything. Just repeat the music. It's unfair, unjust, unfair, unjust. And we are here not to condemn you, but to put, put blood, nutrition to democracy, nutrition that men are equal, nutrition that under God, we are undivided. And that division is now dividing moral decision-making, Don campaigning. Or, sorry, Don governing.
Thank you for those concluding comments.
Thank you.
I started five minutes on the timer through S 404.
Well, I wanted to speak on mainly the flood issue and the ASH Street project. That's two items.
Okay.
I could have a bit additional time.
Okay, please proceed, you'll have two minutes.
Oh, that's just two minutes, okay. Okay, thank you. Blair Beekman, thanks a lot for the words to Mr. Javier previously, Javier previously. Yeah, you are trying to practice the concepts you're offering here, the work that litigation that's going on with flood issues with the ASH Street project. Thank you. To me, that's concepts of accountability. Mr. Javier and myself have both offered here during public comment time the importance of repetition sometimes that is needed to describe things. And when we repeat things, it becomes more understandable and clear. For myself, I know it tests your patience sometimes, but it's important, I think, sometimes, too. And my repetition is the idea of accountability and accountability for the future of flood-issue projects and ideas, or how we deal with flood issues. The fact that we try to be accountable to the process, the idea that we are trying to build a future where we don't make harmful decisions to each other as a community process, that's important lessons for whatever's been going on with the L.A. fires recently, whoever to blame. There is, we are learning to, you know, single out that there are people who are starting these things, who are helping contribute to the fire problems and not solving the problems of fire. They create a worse situation for the fires. Is that a corporate thing that's going on with deeper corporate meanings? We're starting to ask those questions. I hope we can do that, you know, peacefully and honestly and arrive at good answers. It is with that, we have to also be considering how to be building our future where we simply don't want to harm each other in our decision-making as a community in the future. Good luck that we're trying to learn to do that. It's a really important lesson. Good luck how we do it. Thanks.
Basically, this is a biggie. And city attorney's office of the city attorney, thank you, we love you, we need you. It's very important. It's too bad, though, that it takes so much money out of our pockets because we love legislation in this country. And I'm just blown away by the number of cases involved with these items. And we've talked and talked about the stormwater issues, we've talked and talked about the ASH Street issues and lawyer against lawyer and all of these. What's left to be said? Learning our lessons, did we do it? I don't think that's the conversation. I think it is just a conversation, and we just have to keep, keep on talking, communicating with one another, and this is life. And we're learning, yes, we are, but we're going to make more mistakes, I can promise you. And so thank you, thank you, city attorney's office and all of you wonderful attorneys. And thank you for the presentation and the honesty, and we'll pay this money and we hope it doesn't impact our budget. Love to all.
Thank you, Travis, for the presentation. I'm happy to second the motion. I do have questions about how they're going to all work together. Because it seems we have multiple law firms here who are going to defend us in the flood cases?
Yes, we have a total, if this goes through, we will be bringing on the McDougal-Beamer Law Firm as well, so we will have the Schwartz-Sumergen Firm, Dean Gazzo, as well as the Beamer Law Firm, McDougal-Beamer Law Firm, that will be working together. We are coordinating that all in-house with them. Sean Robinson is one of the main deputy city attorneys that is overseeing, as well as myself, and coordinating the work to make sure there's no duplication.
Okay, got it, fantastic. That's very helpful, especially because that's going to be some complex billing right there with different attorneys. So I appreciate that you'll be maybe having a lead counsel, or what are we thinking?
We are splitting up assignments, but yes, we'll have different attorneys taking leads on different components of the case.
Okay.
And then, as you know, familiar with Ms. Miller from Buckhalter, she's obviously tackling the insurance component.
Got it, okay, yep, she is very highly qualified. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. My only other request is just regular updates on these cases in closed session. But I'll second the motion.
Of course.
Thank you.
I'm not going to be supportive of. The city has already spent too many taxpayer dollars on matters concerning the 101 ASH Street building. When the last amendment for this contract came to council in 2022, I didn't support it. And at the time, and at the time noted that the city was going to be in litigation over 101 ASH long after the settlement agreement was put in place. I will not approve this contract extension related to managing what I see as an absolute disaster. So I will be voting no on S 400 and will be supportive of the balance of the items. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And just one quick question in terms of process. And I'm supportive of the actions in front of us, I'm just kind of curious as we're trying to be as attentive as possible to any dollars that the city is expending, what is the process for engaging with the DCAAs, with their, with the union and the kind of rank-and-file members to check in on their opinion on the outsourcing of legal services, on their belief of the internal capacity to handle the cases that are being contracted out?
A memo is sent to the president of the DCAA to see if there is any objection or concern or an agreement with the recommendation that we need outside counsel on these cases.
And I know that they didn't raise any red flags on this. This is more of a question about kind of what the process looks like on a continuous basis. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate the work that's being done here. I'll be supportive of the motion. Thank you, Council President.
Please call the vote, clerk.
Please cast your vote. And that passes eight to one with Councilmember Moreno voting no.
Hello, my name is Jade Atkins. I am a longtime resident of District 3. My question is for all of you. Since December 4th, 41 days ago, there has been a hiring freeze. Research has taught us that hiring freeze actually negatively impacts the budget. To enforce this freeze, work has stopped and jobs unfulfilled. There is work that needs to get done. What work is blocked? Who was put on the back burner and why?
Did that conclude your comments?
No. The hiring freeze should not affect me and the positions I applied to, but it has. Since the position closure date of December 23rd, 22 days ago, myself as well as other applicants are in a applicants are in a prom pool and eligibility has been delayed due to the hiring freeze. I want to know why. Do not allow them to hold back my career. It is not fair. What is the forecasted cost of damage? I want to know the numbers. I want to know who they have not prioritized and why. There are options that need to be explored. What options are currently available for the city to open up work for City of San Diego applicants? What options have we explored? When? What's next? And when? I want to see now. Don't hold me back. Thank you.
I am Preeta Javier, senior with existing medical condition and a victim of ceramics kiln toxicity since 1997. Located, constructed, and operated at 5238 Streamview Drive, San Diego, California 92105, and a resident of the whole. So designated community of City District Nine. My late husband was a veteran and a father figure of the couple owner of the ceramics home business. He was 92 when he fell down in our backyard, broke his hip, rehabilitated in the hospital, brought home. Few months later, passed away quietly on February 25, 2012. We were friends even after his demise. In my residency, I observed smoke and even fume or odor coming from their side. My late husband many times cautioned me not to go near the direction of the ceramics facility. Curious, too, that our windows were permanently fashioned and closed. In those years, I had no idea of what ceramics and its hazards. The COVID pandemic period 2020 led our curiosity in subject and learn about from.
Thank you for that concluding comment. Caesar?
She's sick. This is the doctor's finding. She lives in fear in her own home and avoids being outside. This anxiety has contributed to increased forgetfulness and elevated blood pressure. Thank you for this meeting because we are outside of our home, outside of our property. And this is a great venue to sustain our crusade. Sir Rivera, you were the governing body member, including the mayor. This issue is all about the failure of the rulemakers and the implementers. From DSD to planning to Environmental Service Department, I have learned these departments in our attendance here and the attorney's office. That's why when you were amending the continuing service of these legal moguls, by God, we found the answer. You are paying from our tax to defend the vulnerable citizens. Where is that help? Mom, we'll pray. It's there in their mission. And when we go to the office, is this legal? Oh, sorry, is this criminal or civil? Mom, I do not know. We need help. This is the issue. Oh, you go this floor. Oh, you go that floor. Oh, you go this floor. And finally, we were led to the abatement office. And with, and what, what did they say? We cannot do anything, sir, because we are just following the rule. And what is that rule? Rule 11, ceramics kill is exempt. I asked the clerk office to provide us the revision minutes and all this process to make amendments of what is supposed to be abated, stopped, repealed, or whatever words to destroy that kind of virus in our rulemaking. It's a bad bacteria, sir. Mom, look back, please, or you shall step down for the sake of democracy. There are more capable people, San Diegans, who are ready.
That does conclude your time. Next is Tangelo Boner.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. Thank you for the meeting today. Yeah, it's so important that if we practice accountability at the local level, what we can do in San Diego and with the flood issues. If we practice honesty, if we say we're sorry to each other and really work to not harm each other in the future, that's building a sustainable future, the sustainable future we're trying to build for years now. Let's really talk about it and work on it now. It really takes a commitment to want to work in those terms. And I, I just hope we're, we're ready to make that commitment. I talk about if we work towards openness and accountability with tech, that works towards concepts of peace and not war, basically. We'd actually be addressing and fighting war and we'd be asking war to stay out of our local lives, that we're trying to build a future based on good reasoning and peace and best practices. And it's really important what it can be doing and to really make that commitment to that idealism and those good intentions. It's, it's an important concept and that's why I speak on these things each week. I hope they can be placed inside your heart in some way and to be working on those things. We have to be. And the L.A. fires just makes an example of that, of what it means to be caring instead of uncaring. So good luck in our efforts. Thanks again for the meeting today. I think we, as I said previously, I think we'll all miss Nora in some way, whether you liked her or hated her. Her leadership would, I hope we can, I can hear her leadership in the upcoming issues we're going to deal with, Trump things. Her leadership would have been really much appreciated. It'll be good to see that and other people come out. Hopefully we can bring that out. And good luck in our upcoming meetings this week and for this life. Thank you.
Thank you. Francine Maxwell, Southeastern San Diego. I would encourage the council members to think about talking with the 50.3% that voted no on Measure E. As you encourage us to do readings and get ready for the budget, we entrust you to come and make sure that you talk to us. Although 49.7% said yes to E, again, 3,500 votes were short and this was a president election. So we need to begin to build our relationships. Yes, we elected you, but are you doing our bidding? Are you doing for yourself? We are not upset when you want to climb the ladder and go to other offices, but San Diego is supposed to be safe place for everybody to have uncomfortable conversations. So let's get together before it's time to get ready for the budget and have honest dialogue. I want to thank the IBA and staff, short, overworked, maybe not paid enough, but boy, is that a trusted office. Let's build on the trust that we have for the IBA and help educate the community now. Council President Joe, you know that some communities are short on education. Take the lead. Combine District Four and Eight and bring out the IBA team. Bring out some of the directors. Let's do things differently. Let's have more than two night meetings. Let's do more than just attack the strong former mayor office of government that we have. Let's educate the enterprise revenue streams, what core services truly mean before we have, we hold a meeting and we place dots on things that we can close. We have an expectation for the extreme amount of paid staff that is at the top to look at the middle management. Thank you for your consideration.
Say, hey Diana, sorry I left you guys. I wanted to say to everyone, not, not just you, because I was talking to you earlier about this. Everyone, I'm sorry about whoever's family was. God, God had to be evacuated from the fires. I feel bad for every one of you. I hope your families are doing okay and pray to God. Thank you for every fire department that's helping our L.A. bad fire around California. And pray to you guys. I love you guys.